We are live.
Thank you. And welcome to the Glendale City Council meeting of November the 2nd, 2021, being called at order at 6:03. To slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, City Council as well as Board and Commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. You are encouraged, though, to watch and participate from the safety of your homes and to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. You can also stream it live in high-definition definition on the city's website or on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire devices, using a free app called Screenweed and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during this meeting, call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. Thank you. And what's next, please?
Black salute.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian, would you please lead us with a black salute tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. Will you all please rise, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, this evening we come together and ask that our city be granted success through the good judgment of this council. We are thankful and honored to provide our services to this very special community. We are grateful for all you have provided to this great city and its citizens. We ask for guidance in our daily lives, that we may be positive role models for future generations. Amen.
Thank you. And what is your report, please?
The agenda for the November 2nd, 2021, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on October 26, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next?
Next would be Presentations and Appointments. 3A would be Agenda Preview for the meeting of next week, which there will not be a meeting. The Regular Housing Authority and the City Council meetings for November 9, 2021 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, November 16, 2021.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. And next?
Next would be Consent Items, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
May I move consent items? Madam Mayor, 4A, 4B, 4C, and 4D.
All right. Thank you. A second?
Second.
Councilmember Najarian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. And next?
Next would be City Council and Staff Comments.
Do we have any comments from staff or council, my colleagues?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a couple things.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, the first one is I wanted to bring up something that we've all heard about and then, well, we in council have heard about. I don't know if the public has heard about the hit-and-run accident involving a pedestrian at Wilson in Glendale. And, you know, we call these accidents, but as if no one is to blame, or somehow they're unanticipated, but we know that they are entirely predictable, and they happen when we have people speeding through our streets in increasingly bigger and more dangerous cars. And, as you know, I ride on my bike back and forth, and it frightens me. A couple weeks ago, I asked that we agendize a discussion of AB 43, and I know that's coming up, and that'll be about looking at road segments and where we can perhaps reduce speed limits. I don't think any of us are under the illusion that reducing speed limits will solve the problem, but at least it's a start. At least we can get away from that 85th percentile rule and start letting safety guide speed limits, not driver behavior. So, related note to that, I get notices, and I assume you all get these notices called Vision Zero Alerts on Twitter, if you have a Twitter account. They come in from a group called Streets for All. I'm not familiar with this group, but I'm curious about them, because I've been seeing them on a pretty regular basis. Lots of collisions with pedestrians and bikes in the city of Glendale that we don't hear about. They're probably not extremely serious, but they still are collisions. And I was wondering if we could get a report from staff listing the collisions that have occurred over the past couple of years, maybe broken down by, you know, the type, the severity, location, whatever seems possible. But getting those makes me wonder if there's more that I should know about. So, that was one thing I wanted to ask. If I could get a second from somebody to get such a report, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And then, the other thing is, I wanted to, and this is a little awkward, I'm hearing myself, I'm hearing my voice come back to me, so I will just push through. But I want to respond to some comments that occurred at the end of last week's meeting. You know, we had people calling in about Grayson, we've had people every week calling in about that. And there were some things said that concerned me. I wanted to comment on them, I didn't do it at that time, I didn't think it was appropriate in the five-minute discussion period, or, I'm sorry, the kind of comment period to do that, but I want to do that now. And I want to start with something that Councilmember Najarian brought up about these five new power plants that Governor Newsom has supposedly approved. And I looked into it a little bit, and the reality is a lot less dramatic, so I want people to understand this. In July, the governor did issue an emergency proclamation directing all agencies to put together ideas for how to increase the supply for this past summer and for next summer. And the California Energy Commission authorized four additional temporary gas units, not plants, but single units, 30 megawatts each, so that would total 120 megawatts, to be added across the state as needed. And they're mobile units, which Mark Young last week told us they were. These would be for two years, so these would be for this past summer and this coming summer. That's the intention. They're temporary, and they are 120 megawatts in total, remember, for a state of maybe close to 40 million people. And that compares to what we're looking at, which is over 90 megawatts for a city of 200,000 people. So, I do think it's important that we put that in context. I'm not excited about what Governor Newsom wants to do, but, you know, we should understand that the magnitude does not compare to what we're looking at here, and also the timeline. So, that was one thing. And the other thing is, I feel that, I think that what was said about the callers was not really fair. There was a suggestion that they're not informed about what we're doing, that they don't understand that we're doing a lot. And I don't think that's it. I think people do understand that we have done a lot here. And I'll be the first to acknowledge that we're in a totally different place than we were three years ago. We've had a 60% reduction in the amount of gas that we're considering. We're talking about a very large battery system, and I could go on and on, you know. And Mark Young did talk about the virtual power plant, and these other programs, and E-Land, and the geothermal. So, we have done a lot. And I should note, though, that that would not have happened. We would not be doing these things if it were not for the pressure from the community. But I think the point is not that we're not doing anything. I don't think that's what people are saying. I think what they're saying is that we're not doing enough to meet what's really an all-hands-on-deck, critical climate emergency. So, two things can be true. We could be doing a lot, and we could still not be doing enough. And I'm not going to go through, we're all reading the news about COP26 and the climate, so I don't need to go through that. But that's what people are seeing. They're frightened, they're angry, and they don't see us doing enough. And that's what they're trying to tell us. And I think we can't dismiss that. We really have to understand where they're coming from, and we can't just tell people to be patient. I don't think our generation, to be honest, has the moral authority to tell people to be patient. We have to act, and we need to do a lot more than we're doing. So, let me just leave it there. I could go on and on, of course, but I won't. There'll be plenty of times in the future to talk about this, but I wanted to get that off my chest. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any comments from staff?
No.
What's next, please?
Madam Mayor, we don't have comments.
Thank you. Thank you. What's next, please?
Next would be Community Event Announcements.
Do we have callers?
I do have two callers at this time.
Thank you. Let's hear from them.
Rondi Werner. Randy?
Yes, hello. Hello, Mayor Devine.
Three minutes, go ahead.
City Council members. Okay. Thank you. I am Vice President of the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association and the Glendale Home and Supporting Council. Thank you for deciding last week to pursue the interim urgency ordinance to put restrictions on SB 9 and SB 478 projects. We hope that design review for single-family projects will remain in the ordinance, so at least the objective standards can be applied through this public process. We also hope that numeric values that weren't mentioned, such as minimum street widths, can be included in the criteria. I also wanted to address council's concern that there were not more speakers on the item last week. I thought I should make you all aware that neighborhood associations in Glendale supported the plan to adopt the urgency ordinance and felt that council and staff were generally on the right track, so they didn't think it was necessary to call in. And hopefully, council read the letters that Neighborhood Association sent to convey their recommendations and support. In addition, many Neighborhood Association members, including myself, have been actively writing position letters against SB 9 and SB 10 and posting them on the California Legislature portal. We've been reaching out to Senator Portantino and Assemblymember Friedman, urging them to oppose SB 9, SB 10, and similar bills that would create more problems than they solved. And we've been regularly participating in virtual meetings of United Neighbors and Livable California to fight bills like these and to support bills that bring control back to local government. Neighborhood groups have been hard at work because we share City Council's passion for doing what's best for Glendale, and we advocate tirelessly for local control. We hope that there are no further efforts to discourage participation in land use policy so that we can all work together toward our common goals to protect and to enhance the quality of life for all residents and to support housing solutions that are fair to our city. We have an uphill battle to mitigate the damage the SB 9 and future gentrification bills could do to our city. It is important that we join forces whenever we can to promote legislation that will alleviate instead of worsen the housing affordability crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Rondi, for all the work that you're doing. Next caller, please.
Alex Gazzalpore. Alex, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, councilmembers, and city staff. I'd like to take this opportunity and invite you and the members of the community to the upcoming Glendale Fire Department's award ceremony, November 4 at 9:00 a.m. at the Glendale Fire Station 21. The Glendale Fire Foundation is committed to enhancing the mission of the Glendale Fire Department. We are dedicated to the remote and the well-being and the safety of our community and its citizens through the support of services, educational programs, projects, and community initiatives led by the Glendale Fire Department. One of our highlighted programs is the support of the Glendale Fire Department Annual Report Ceremony. We feel so strongly that the dedication and commitment of our Glendale Fire Department members, especially throughout the pandemic, is important to recognize. Glendale Fire Department firefighters, paramedics, dispatchers, ambulance operators, and civilian staff have continued to come to work each day and place their own well-being and that of their loved ones at risk. With this in mind, we will be hosting the award ceremony this year on November 4, 2021, at Glendale Fire Station 21, located at 421 Oak Street in the city of Glendale at 9:00 a.m. to help recognize the outstanding work of our Glendale Fire Department. This event is $25 per person to attend. We are still looking for sponsorships as well for this event. And all additional information for this event, you can find if you go to www.glendalfirefoundation.org. Once again, www.glendalfirefoundation.org. We look forward to seeing all of you at this year's event, again, November 4 at 9:00 a.m. at Fire Station 21. Any additional questions in regards to this year's events, you could call 818-548-4814. And without being said, on behalf of the Glendale Fire Department and the Glendale Fire Foundation, we'd like to cordially invite members of the community, city staff, council, and any supporter of the Fire Department wishing to attend this event this Thursday, November 4 at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you, Alex. I hope you have, we have a big crowd there. Thank you. Okay, and what's next, please?
Next is Action Items. 88 Community Services and Parks regarding donation transfer of the Pelencani Park and Glen Oaks Park Playground Equipment to Armenian Educational Foundation. One, Resolution Authorizing Donation Transfer of the Pelencani Park and Glen Oaks Park Playground Equipment to Armenian Educational Foundation.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. This item is presented to you tonight in response to inquiry and request by Councilmember Kasakian and seconded by the mayor, Mayor Devine. And we believe that this is a great way to repurpose these playground equipments that were going to be replaced in these two parks in Glendale. I'm going to ask Mr. Onig Bulenikian, our Director of Community Services and Parks, excuse me, catch my breath, Community Services and Parks, to provide you the details of this transaction.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of the council. So, as Mr. Galanian mentioned, City Council directed staff to consider donating the existing playground equipment at Pelencani and Glen Oaks Park Playgrounds to a nonprofit organization that's interested in the equipment. We did reach out to a number of organizations. We reached out to a number of organizations in California, especially the organizations that were affected by the recent fires, and had zero response. We did have the Armenian Educational Foundation reach out to us a couple months ago and ask if, asked if they couldn't take a look at both playgrounds. The board did visit both sites and are interested in both those playgrounds, and they would like to donate to two schools in Armenia, one in Arctic and one in Gumri. A little background about the Armenian Educational Foundation. It's a 71-year-old organization. It was founded in 1950, and the foundation has been providing financial assistance to Armenian students and educational institutions, including allocating funds for student scholarships, programs, and grants, and renovation over 200 schools in Armenia. With that being said, staff will go ahead and work with contractor to disassemble both playground donations, depending on what happens tonight with council's decision. We'll go ahead and disassemble both playgrounds and properly store them into two 40-foot containers and have the Armenian Educational Foundation pick them up. They will be responsible for paying for the delivery to Armenia, so at this point, there will be no cost to the city for us to disassemble and store them in a container. With that being said, I do have the vice chair of the organization, Mr. Peter Bagdusarian, on the call to answer any questions that council may have.
Mr. Bagdusarian, would you like to say a few words?
I think you guys did a great job of summarizing, you know, our 71-year history. I just want to say, we do, we are based in Glendale, and most of our donors and our donor base are, live in and around Glendale. And we've been doing the, our focus primarily is on education, and we're delighted to have, be able to repurpose the park, and this would be a fantastic new item for the kids who will receive this park, and we're happy that we have just renovated these two new schools through funds raised over here, so they have newly renovated schools. This park is just going to be a fantastic additional surprise for them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any comments from my colleagues?
Madam Mayor?
Yeah?
Yeah, just.
Time, please. Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, just to say thank you to Peter and his organization and to Onig and staff for coming together with this plan. It's a win-win, makes sense to me. We don't want this stuff going into the dumpster, and it's apparently still very good, useful, good-looking equipment that will make a lot of people really happy, so I'm glad we're doing this.
Well, Mr. Brotman, I wish you would have been on council about three years ago. It's better to donate than to destroy. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, I want to thank you for your, I want to thank you for your support of this initiative. I know that you brought it up a few years back, and I know that unfortunately, we weren't able to donate some of the equipment at the time, but as a city, we have continuous renewal of our parks' equipment, but the equipment is, as has been mentioned at different times, still suitable for continued use, especially in places where communities may not have access. I have been to Armenia on at least two occasions where I had an opportunity to visit some of these schools, and oftentimes, the playgrounds are, you know, sometimes you'll see playgrounds that have been there since the 80s, and you can see the wear and tear, and it's really not inviting for the children to play on, and I think that our equipment would be a tremendous addition. I commend the Armenian Educational Foundation for all the work they do in renovating the schools and continuing to work with the country as it's developing, and this seems like it's a great partnership. Hopefully, it's successful. I look forward to seeing the school, the photos from the completion of this and the smiling faces of the children who will benefit from it. Thank you, Mr. Bulenikian, and I look forward to casting my vote in support of this. Thank you. With that, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I think that's a wonderful idea. I'll second. Okay. Councilmember Agajanian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. With pleasure. Next item, please.
Next item would be Public Works Regarding Removal and Replacement of Roofing Systems at Rock Haven. One, Resolution to Dispense with the Bidding Procedures Set forth in Glendale Municipal Code Section 4.12.010, and authorize the Deputy Director of Finance purchasing to solicit competitive bids and execute a contract pursuant to GMC Section 4.12.010 for the removal and replacement of roofing systems at Rock Haven. Two, Resolution of Appropriation, appropriating $240,000 to fund the removal and replacement of Rock Haven roofing systems.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Devine, members of City Council, this item is presented to you in an effort to mitigate continuous water damage to the buildings at Rock Haven, and at this time, we want to, we're asking for your approval of the project and appropriation of funds before seasonal rains cause for the damage to these buildings. I am going to turn it over to Yazdan Imran, our Director of Public Works, to provide you with more details.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. As Mr. Galanian mentioned, for years, we've been dealing with having to do temporary fixes to these roofs by using tarps and other means to prevent water from entering these buildings. However, those are not sustainable solutions, so we are recommending a more permanent weather protection by removing and replacing these roof tiles in accordance with the Secretary of, with the Secretary of Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties and Guidelines for Preserving Rehabilitation and Restoring and Reconstructing Historic Buildings. So, these all will be done in accordance with that, and we are respectfully requesting your, the council's approval for this operation to move forward, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from my colleagues? I will take phone calls.
Madam Mayor, there are no phone calls.
My move the item.
Oh, just a second.
Oh, whoa.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, I, sorry, I had to step away for a second. I didn't hear whether you covered the concern that was brought up by the Historical Society about replacing just those tiles that need to be replaced. Could you address that and the other comments on that letter, please?
Is Jay Platt available?
Madam Mayor, he is not. He had another commitment tonight. But, Mr. Brotman, to answer your question, yes, we will replace to the standards of the answer your question, yes, we will replace to the standards of the Secretary of Interior. That will be looking at tiles, preserving those that can be preserved. They'll be removed one, one at a time and then put back if they're able to be used or replaced in a like manner. I think the second question, or the second item in the letter was, had to do with our outreach in the future. The Glendale Historic Society, in their letter, asked that they be listed, or they be contacted with outreach, as well as the Chrysena Valley Historical Society. We had listed just a general, those interested in historic preservation, which would include those two groups. And then finally, they wanted to caution that whoever does have a successful bid, that they are skilled and trained in Secretary of Interior Standards for this type of project. So we will do those things.
And I, you know, I just want to add, Phil, thank you very much for that answer, because I know that we probably all asked about that, and we got that, that answer. I just want to assure everyone that's watching that has anything to do with historic preservation that we will be keeping that in mind during this whole process of using this $8 million to renovate Rockhaven. And along the way, as long as I have anything to do with it, and I'm sure my colleagues as well, they will be consulted one way or another. So there is just an assurance, I think, from council, from myself, anyway, I guess I have to speak for myself, that we will be, I will be in touch with them through the process to make sure that everything is copacetic. It's just that I caution that we have a budget. We have an $8 million budget, and we have to stay within that budget and do what we can, be fiscally responsible with our spending, and, and maintain the, the Rockhaven site, but also we have $8 million, and that will be it. So I just wanted to add that at the end. So if there are no other comments, no, no phone calls?
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes. I just want to add that by spending money and fixing the roof of these old historic buildings, we are trying to preserve them. Otherwise, we'll be, after a while, they're gonna, building will collapse. I mean, the roof will come down. So the point is, we are trying to preserve the Rockhaven, basically.
Right.
Thank you. With that, if I can move the item, if it's okay.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Counselmember Najarian.
And this is, this is entirely my own thoughts. I would, and you sort of touched upon it, as well as Mr. Lanzafame, I would encourage the interested stakeholders to come together to form perhaps a working group where, I mean, we can just tick off a few. It's the Glendale Historical Society, the La Chrysena Historical Society, Friends of Rockhaven, the Homeowners Association in that area, perhaps even the Status on the Commission of Women due to the women's history there. Just, just to come together and perhaps work as one, so their, their thoughts can be unified and our, likewise, our outreach to them can be unified as well. And there may even be more groups out there, I'm not sure, but it would be good if, if there was this working group. I don't mean commission, I don't mean committee, I mean working group where they get together and consult each other and perhaps deliver a message as they see fit, as often as they see fit, to council and staff, and likewise, staff and council can respond to them in that manner, so the message does get to the right people. That's, those are just my thoughts, and I, I mean, that's not a motion or agendizing anything, but I think that would make it easier for everyone.
No, I think that's, I think that's a good idea, because we, we want to listen to all of them, because we want to get it right. You know, we have a certain amount of money, and we want to get it right, and preserve Rockhaven to the best of our ability. And I think with their knowledge of historic preservation, we can do, we can do a good job, and we can do it right. Okay, so Councilmember Agajanian, did you move this item?
Yes, I moved item.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Was that Mr. Brodmann?
No, I seconded it, but if Mr. Brodmann does-
Oh, Kasakian, okay. Councilmember Kasakian?
Thanks.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brodmann?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Okay, what's next, please?
Next is item number 10, Reports and Information, Draft Housing Element.
Okay, all right. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Devine, Member City Council, staff previously had presented an update on the housing element, the next cycle of the housing element of our general plan. Tonight, they will be presenting, together with a consultant, presenting more details on this housing element, and as well as kickstarting the comment period. I just wanted to, to remind council that this is an informational-only item. We will not be taking direction from council this evening, but we will have a discussion and be able to respond to questions accordingly. With that, I'll turn it over to Phil Lanzafame, our Community Development Director, for introduction to item and introduction of the team that will present this.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, we are at a milestone with the preparation of Cycle Six, the Cycle Six Housing Element for the City of Glendale. We have completed a draft, and we published that. We wanted to bring it to you, as well as the community, in this forum, and then we'll be, we'll be having a community meeting again on November 15th. We'll show a slide of that flyer later on in the presentation. But it is important to note that we are at that stage where we've completed that initial draft. We have sent it to Housing and Community Development, the state agency that reviews that for us. At the same time, the community has access to it. It's 410 or 415 pages, but there's a lot of good material in there, and so we, we do have it posted on our website for that. As Mr. Galanian said, we want to go through some highlights, and our consultant, Amanda Trupiano, will, will go through that. I just want to caution that we have a tremendous number of goals, policies, and programs in this housing element. So the way that this is structured, and Amanda will, will walk you through it again, we're, we're highlighting those things that are new. If they're not on the slide, it doesn't mean that we're not doing them, or that they got dropped, or we forgot them, and we'll try and point those out where they exist. With that, then, I'd like to introduce Amanda. She is with De novo Planning Group, the consultant that has been working with staff to prepare this draft. Amanda?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So you can advance the next slide, and I'll be sharing a brief PowerPoint and available to answer questions. So the 2021 to 2029 Glendale Draft Housing Element is broken into two primary parts. The first part is called Your Housing Plan. This is about the first 50 pages of those 400 or so pages. The Housing Plan includes the city's goals and policies, housing programs, and quantified objectives. Part two is the Background Report. That's pages about 150 to about 200. In the Background Report, we describe an assessment of the city's progress towards achieving its fifth cycle housing programs, an assessment of current and future housing needs, a description of constraints to housing development, an analysis of available housing resources, and an assessment of fair housing and the assessment of fair housing analysis. Next slide. There are two appendices also provided. The first appendix is the Sites Inventory. This includes a map of those sites identified to accommodate the city's RINA, as well as a list of the parcels and their characteristics, including their assessor parcel numbers, size, current zoning, and capacity. Appendix B is a summary of the public outreach performed as part of the Housing Element Update, including a description of the activities, copies of advertisements and presentations, a summary of the community survey, and I wanted to note that as we receive public comments, Appendix B will be updated to include those comments, and those updates will be transmitted to HCD to consider as part of their review. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the Part One of Your Housing Element is comprised of goals, policies, and programs. Goals are aspirational. They are a statement of future conditions of where the city wants to go. So they are particularly high-level and should stand the test of time and guide decision-making over multiple years and planning cycles. Policies usually start with a verb, and they describe an action in order to help implement that goal. And then finally, programs. Programs are those types of efforts that are implementable. You can assess or measure progress towards achieving a program. So as shown on the screen, they really work together, with the goal being at the top of the pyramid, policies supporting that goal, and then programs helping to implement the goals and policies. Next slide. So in particular, the city's 2021 to 2029 Housing Element includes six goals. All of these goals are iterated in your current Housing Element and remain valid to help guide the future of housing policy here in Glendale. However, some changes were made to the policies and the programs, and that's what I'm going to spend some time highlighting tonight. Specifically, 43 current policies remain appropriate and are working well here and have been carried forward into the new Housing Element. So that's 43 have remained. And we have introduced 11 new policies that are prepared in response to feedback we received through the community outreach efforts, as well as state, state requirements. And then in terms of programs, the city has carried forward 20 current programs. Those are things like your inclusionary housing ordinance, the development of affordable units, protection of rental rights, and fair housing programs. All of these continue to be an important part of the work that Glendale does to address its current and future housing needs. So they're absolutely still included and carried forward in the new Housing Element. In addition, 11 new programs have been identified to support those community priorities and housing law. Next slide. So I'm going to specify, again, as was described earlier, the components that are new. So I wanted to remind you that these are a highlight of the new programs, and you can see some gaps in the number. I think that's because those numbers were from your existing Housing Element. So Goal One envisions a city with a wide range of housing types to meet the needs of current and future residents. Five new policies have been identified to help further support that goal. Those include an identification of adequate capacity to accommodate the city's RINA, recognition of underdeveloped residential areas, the role of accessory and junior accessory dwelling units, potential future innovations in infill development, and the reuse of sites identified in previous Housing Element inventories. Goal Two envisions a city with high-quality residential neighborhoods that are attractive and well-designed, and one new policy has been included to monitor and address the effects of new development on existing residential areas. Next slide. Goal Three identifies a city with increased opportunities for affordable and special-needs housing development. Three new policies have been added to encourage the city to use additional available tools to facilitate development, addressing the specific needs of workforce housing and recognition of the great work that the city has been doing in that arena, as well as additional regulatory incentives that may be available. Goal Four represents a city with housing services that address needs with special, address groups with special housing needs. This was very well-supported by existing policies, and no additional policies have been added. Next slide. Goal Five identifies a city with equal housing opportunities for all persons. Two new policies have been added to recognize the city's responsibility to provide a regulatory environment that supports this goal, as well as an additional emphasis on public input. And then finally, the last goal, a city with housing that is livable and sustainable. No new policies have been added to support that goal as well. Next slide. That brings me to the programs. So the programs are the actual actions that the city is taking on a day-to-day basis in order to help achieve and implement these policies. They are organized into nine topic areas or strategies. Two of these strategies are brand-new. The other seven were always in your current Housing Element. The two new strategies are the first one, adequate sites, and the last one, to remove constraints. The others listed here I'll describe in the subsequent pages. Next slide. First strategy is to provide adequate sites. Again, this is a new strategy included, and it does a really focused job of describing the available sites in order to accommodate the city's RINA at all income categories throughout the planning period. This is in direct response to state legislation that requires cities to now measure, monitor, and track progress towards meeting its RINA, and ensure that adequate capacity is maintained for the duration of the planning period. Programs 1A through 1F have been added, and these are largely consistent with those policies presented earlier on providing a range of housing units. They describe things like maintaining an adequate land use policy and development capacity to accommodate your RINA throughout the planning period, the responsibility of the city in terms of surplus lands and the disposition of those lands, the role to ensure the replacement of existing affordable units, an opportunity for adaptive reuse to explore this as a potential here in Glendale where a lot of the available sites are occupied by existing uses. This was really in direct response to a suggestion we received from the community at our prior workshop, that this might be a really viable option to explore here. Then finally, a program looking at accessory and junior accessory dwelling units and supporting that for the planning period. Next slide. Strategy Two includes the preservation and enhancement of the city's existing housing stock. This was a priority for the city in your current Housing Element. Five strong programs that continue to remain viable and are effective addressed this strategy, and no new programs were added. Next slide. Strategy Three, again, very well-supported the production of affordable and special-needs housing. So this is the actual development of new units to address these needs. The city has been a leader in this field and has five current programs that have been maintained in the new Housing Element to continue to support this strategy. Next slide. Strategy Four is specific to rental assistance, really focusing on the voucher program, but also I wanted to call your attention to Program 2E provided in a, in a prior strategy that also addressed significant parts of the city's work in protecting the preservation and conservation of the city's existing affordable units, including existing affordable rental units. So those really do work hand-in-hand. Although that program is housed under the second strategy, it also addresses rental assistance. Next slide. Strategy Four focuses on increased ownership opportunities. There was one existing program that's been maintained and one new program added to explore the possibility for tenant or community opportunity to purchase programs. So again, just an additional opportunity that might be relevant in the community to help further support ownership opportunities. Next slide. Strategy Six discusses the provision of housing services. There are three current programs that have been evaluated and determined to be working well to support this strategy. No new programs have been added. Next slide. Strategy Seven focuses on fair housing. So we're going to spend a few minutes at the end of the presentation talking specifically about the new requirement to address fair housing in the Housing Element. These programs are really emphasizing and elevating the city's ongoing work in terms of its fair housing program. So one current program was existing in your current element that has been maintained, and two additional programs have been added. The first is an evaluation of anti-displacement impacts as a result of new- The first is an evaluation of anti-displacement impacts as a result of new development. So ensuring that any potential impacts on existing neighbors or residents are considered as part of the planning process when new development is occurring. And then the second is the affirmatively furthering fair housing program. And this is a very detailed program that dives deep into the city's responsibility to ensure the provision of fair housing throughout the community. And we'll spend another few minutes talking about that. Next slide. Strategy eight talks about a livable and sustainable community. Four current programs have been modified and maintained here. No new programs added. And then finally, next slide. Brings me to strategy nine, again, a new strategy to remove constraints. That includes two new programs to monitor changes in federal, state planning and zoning laws, as well as a number of very specific zoning code amendments that are needed to remove constraints in accordance with state housing law. Next slide. So speaking specifically to the strategy to accommodate the city's arena, there is a map on this slide and there's going to be a big table on the next one. So I'm going to share some specifics that expand upon the discussion we've had at our prior briefing in August. So there are two strategies, overall strategies, that the city uses to accommodate its arena. The first is going to be called credits. These are things that are ongoing that the city can take as a credit off the top of its overall arena allocation. And there are three specific categories of credits relevant in Glendale. The first are projects that are constructed or under construction during the planning period. So we can assume a credit for those. Again, they came online during the planning period and count towards this sixth cycle arena. The second is the provision of existing multifamily units that were converted to deed-restricted affordable units. So these are your workforce housing projects that have been deed-restricted to affordable to moderate or lower-income households. Those can also be used as a credit towards your arena with some specific requirements that we have considered as part of this process. And the third type of credit are projects that have been approved but are not yet under construction. That brings us part of the way there, but not all of the way there. So we need to look at other available opportunities to accommodate your remaining arena. And those fall generally within six categories. The first are projects that are under consideration but not yet approved. So project applications that have been submitted but are not approved yet. The role of accessory dwelling units, which we've discussed before. Sites that are zoned already for residential uses that are vacant, and I think we can all appreciate Glendale has very few of those, but there are some that have been identified in the inventory. The fourth category are underutilized residential sites, again, sites designated already for residential development that are available for additional residential development. They are underutilized. And underutilized mixed-use sites primarily located along the city's transportation corridors. And then finally, sites in the downtown specific plan area. And I wanted to emphasize that strategies three and four are under the sites to accommodate the city's remaining sixth cycle arena, the vacant residential sites and underutilized residential sites. All of these sites were identified in your current 2014 to 2021 housing element. These were part of the solution to help the city accommodate its fifth cycle arena, its prior cycle. No new vacant residential sites and no new underutilized residential sites are identified in this inventory. They all were identified in the prior element, and those that are continued to be available for development have been reiterated here in this inventory. Next slide. This is included in the housing element. So presented here on the screen is just a snapshot of all of the detailed assessment included in chapter five of the background report. The top row illustrates the city's overall arena of thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five units. After deducting those credits of about four thousand ninety-five units, the city is left with a remaining arena of nine thousand three hundred and thirty units, and you can see it described on the income categories on the screen. The proposed projects represent a contribution of approximately five hundred and three units, accessory dwelling units, twelve hundred and seventy-two, vacant residential sites have the potential to yield thirty-seven units, underutilized residential sites, about twenty-five hundred units, underutilized mixed-use sites, thirteen hundred units, and sites in the downtown specific plan, five thousand units. And there are a number of assumptions, capacity requirements and details that I could go into if you have questions, but that's all detailed and included in the assessment of these sites in the background report of the housing element. Overall, there is a surplus of approximately ten percent of units or thirteen hundred nineteen units across all income categories. This surplus is an important part of our strategy to accommodate your arena because it allows the city to maintain that adequate capacity for the duration of the planning period without having to go back and find replacement sites every time a project is proposed at one of these locations. So a small surplus is recommended by HCD and has been included in this inventory. Next slide. And finally, also in just a moment, talking about fair housing. Affirmatively furthering fair housing, again, means taking meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination, to overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities. The assessment of fair housing included in your housing element describes levels of diversity, analyzes populations with disabilities, female-headed households, assesses patterns based on median household income, ethnicity or racial concentrations, and various opportunity indices. And we also are required to consider how those sites identified to accommodate your arena help to support affirmatively furthering fair housing. So the fair housing law requires us to consider sites in relationship to these patterns. There are opportunities available for housing development in all resource areas, and housing is specifically located adjacent to places with access to transportation, goods and services, helping to create more livable, diverse and connected communities. Next slide. This is one example of an exhibit shared in the housing element, specifically looking at the TCAC opportunity maps by Census Trac. As you can see, those sites are located with pinpoints throughout the community, and they are located in different areas of opportunity, not concentrated in lower or high areas, really throughout the opportunity areas to help create that diversity and connection. Additionally, while not shown as pinpoints on the map, accessory or junior accessory dwelling units can be located throughout Glendale, and they also provide very attainable housing options at different income levels in areas, including in areas of high opportunity. And finally, new development that's located along your transportation corridors and transit routes helps to support a reduction in vehicle miles traveled, improved air quality and environmental conditions, and a more livable and sustainable community for a whole of Glendale. So next slide. So as was mentioned previously, we have just initiated yesterday the public review period. The draft housing element is available for public comment for the duration of this month. We also sent to HCD a copy of this draft and asked for their review and comments. We expect those back in early January. The methods to submit comments are available on the screen and provided on the website directly to staff. And again, all comments received will be considered through the review processes and transmitted to HCD. I think that that concludes my presentation. Next slide. Yes, we are completed. And then finally, while not a slide, we can discuss this in more detail, but we are hosting a community open house to share the details of the draft housing element and receive comments again on November fifteenth. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I will turn it back over to staff to help facilitate any questions you may have.
Just a follow-up on the last statement. Autumn, if you could put that flyer up. On November fifteenth, from six to eight o'clock, we will be having a remote community meeting to discuss the housing element. We'll be taking comments, questions. We'll have a presentation similar to this of what it entails and focusing on those areas that people have shown the most interest. This flyer will be up on our webpage tomorrow, and we'll allow you, if you click on the link, RSVP Now, it takes you to Eventbrite page. You can register for it, and then we'll make sure that you get the link, and we'll hold that meeting on the fifteenth. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Thank you, Amanda, for that very, very good presentation. It was so comprehensive and a lot of new information in there, I think, for all of us, which I really appreciated. Thank you so much. Any other comments from colleagues?
I just want to urge staff that in when having a community meeting on a topic of this level of importance, that we do everything possible to make sure that every part of our community has an opportunity to hear this and hear it in a forum and in a way that's most comfortable for them to be able to understand. That includes all the different languages. If that means we have to go and hunt community groups down to make sure that we get our foot in the door and tell them that this is coming, then we ought to do that. But I don't want us to see that, hey, we checked off a box, we did a forum, fifteen people showed up, or sixty people showed up, and then, you know, months later, we, as the council people, get the ire of the community about how could this be so or what's happening? So if this means taking a show on the road and having some of your staff go separately to different groups, to different homeowners groups, whatever it may be, church groups to make sure that we get this information out there. Housing is a very important topic, as we all know. People are very concerned about it. There's a lot of questions about it, a lot of misconceptions as well, and I think this is a good presentation to put the information out there in the hands of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Good point. Councilmember Najarian.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Where was Amanda from again? De novo?
De novo planning group.
And where are they from?
Amanda, you want to talk about where your firms are based?
I'm in Orange County.
Ah, okay.
They're also doing several other element updates for us, or land use.
We do work out throughout the city.
I think it was a good presentation, Amanda, but it, I mean, in theory, I think you've hit the points, but in practice, I think this is at odds in so many ways with what we hear on the streets in Glendale. And let me just start with a few different points. I don't want to get into a full-on discussion because we're not supposed to do that now, but that little shaded part of La Crescenta, and you say that that's Glendale's sphere of influence. Glendale is probably the last place that the folks in La Crescenta want to look to and be influenced by. And that's just the way it is for several reasons. They very much appreciate their low-density housing and look to Glendale's moderate density as the worst thing that could happen on the face of this earth. Just look at some of the social media posts and letters to the editors and all that other stuff. So that's just a, that might be just a little minor point, and sphere of influence may be just a term of art. The other thing that I see is the downtown, the underutilization of the downtown specific plan. Folks are ready to hang us, well, I don't want to speak for everyone, but hang anyone on council who has voted for the increased density projects that we've seen. We've had a few larger projects, five hundred units a pop, and the entire area is ridiculed as the concrete canyon or the stucco through way. I don't know what that's called. So in the plan, it says that you want to increase the density and take advantage of underutilized spaces in the downtown specific plan. I think that's a problem. The other points that I see that you're making are the underutilized residential spots in your map. And, I mean, the last thing people want to see are a small craftsman house torn down and put sixteen units in. People are very much opposed to that. So that's why I say on paper, yes, those are potential growth sites, but in reality, I mean, it's a different, it's a different world out there. And perhaps in your community meetings, that will be expressed in certain ways, but just from what I've learned in my time here on council and in the city, those are some hot-button issues. And I think it may force us to rethink our strategies, especially when you're talking about the arena strategies. So I just wanted to raise those few points and point them out.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Anyone else? Councilmember Brotman.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, this may be more of a question to staff, but I just wanted to check on the community outreach, public comment question. The November fifteenth meeting, is it the only meeting we're having of this type, or are we having a series of meetings like we've had on some other major issues?
The fifteenth was the community meeting that we had planned. As Amanda alluded to, we had prior, but that is the meeting where we can discuss a draft now that we have a draft. That's the one that we had planned. Mr. Kasakian has asked us to make it widely known that it's available and go visit people that would want to hear that information.
Okay. And why do we limit the public comment period to the month of November if we're not expecting to get a reply from HCD until, I think you said, into January? Is there any, is there any, you know, reason why we couldn't have a two-month comment period?
I, I'll.
And I may have seen that, but I'm thinking of longer comment. I mean, I'm kind of, you know, I think we're all, we all know that this is a very complicated and very important and very sensitive topic, and we're just now getting a draft, so nobody has had time. I mean, maybe a few people have started to look at the draft that's just come out. And to have one single meeting for public comment on the draft and to have this short of a time, is there a reason why we couldn't have a two-month comment period? And are these meetings, a series of these meetings?
I will, I will take one response and see if Amanda has another. We do have, we're expecting to comment back from HCD in sixty days. So if we take public comments through November, that allows us an opportunity to prepare responses and send it up to HCD during their review period. And Amanda, I don't know if there's any other?
I would just reiterate that. I think that we've heard a great suggestion to focus additional outreach opportunities during this month of November. We can continue to receive comments subsequent to the end of November. I might suggest that we just confirm that those comments received by the end of November will be able to be addressed and transmitted to HCD as part of their review. But if additional comments were to come in subsequent to that date, we would absolutely continue to receive those, consider those, and present them to both the Planning Commission and the City Council through the public hearing process. So there's a lot of opportunity for additional comment and consideration. So perhaps the way that we can just encourage the community to submit their comments to the best of their ability by the end of November so that they can be reviewed and transmitted to the state as part of their consideration. Any additional comments we receive will be shared directly with the Planning Commission and the City Council if that's an acceptable option.
Um, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
Say, you know, my understanding is that some of our neighboring cities have, you know, started this process much earlier and have had much more extensive outreach and much more lengthy public comment periods. And I'm really concerned about how truncated this process is here in Glendale, given the sensitivity and the fact that we're going from, what, an arena cycle with a number of two thousand and change to, you know, thirteen thousand five hundred. It's, you know, something like this is so impactful that I think we need to do a lot more in terms of.
more in terms of making sure people are aware and, and have been able to comment. I know that we're under constraints. I know many of the things Councilmember Najarian mentioned are going to be frustrations that we probably can't do much about because of the constraints we're under, but at the very least, we should make sure that people understand and, and have weighed in and to the extent we do have flexibility around the edges in terms of where, where we put the housing, that we're able to, you know, accommodate that. So I'm concerned.
And if I, if I may, I would like to say that besides this public meeting on November the 15th, I think absolutely we should have a, an additional meeting with the HOA, the, the Homeowners Association. They can take that out to their coordinating council. They can take it out to their, their different HOAs, but that's absolutely necessary to get to the coordinating council for sure. That, that should be a mandatory meeting to get this, this information out there. And then they can send it out to the, their homeowners. That's my suggestion. If, unless we can, if we can do more, that would be even better. But I think that's absolutely necessary.
Madam Mayor, there, Mr. Brodmann said something at the end and, and I just want to make sure that everybody, community included, knows so when we do go for these meetings, they're, they're aware. The map that we saw and where we're, where we're showing the ability to build housing is something of a hypothetical exercise. It doesn't, the map is not where it can't take place. The map is not where it must take place. The map is where it could take place. So even if there was, even if we took one of those parcels off the map, it's still zoned for housing and housing could be built there. So the map is really, it, it's, it's meeting that obligation of RENA to say, do you have the sites to build 1,345 units? Yes, we do. 13,450 units. Yes, we do. And here's where those exist. And as we reported, there is, there's even 10% surplus. So that, again, the map doesn't say development is going to go here or development is not going to go here. It's showing those sites where it could go.
Showing the possibilities.
Exactly. And, and it's an important distinction because I, I have heard some comments from the community where I, I fear that they believe this map is the map for development. That's where it is, is going to take place. If you adopt this, there's going to be housing on every one of those sites. And that's not the exercise that we did, although theoretically that could happen. I, I don't think it ever will, but.
And I, I think that's a very import, that, that's a very important point to get across to the public and all of our residents, that this is not where it's going, it's where it could go.
Madam Mayor, but I, if I, if I can just jump in and say, I, I understand that and I appreciate the, the academic exercise of saying it's theoretical, but, you know, I don't know anyone who's going to buy that and think that, you know, one day that may not happen. Certainly, we've seen development in this city. I know that Councilmember Najarian has pointed out to the old black and white photos of the Glendale flatlands and the hillsides and, and we look at them today and certainly has looked different. The question becomes, you know, and I've, and I've said this before, I, I appreciated this presentation and the information that was provided in it, but, you know, saying that's just theoretical and then saying it's unlikely, we don't know because next year or the following year, the legislature may pass rules that strip us of even more local authority to be able to stop having some say in what gets built and where it gets built. And then all of a sudden, theory is reality. I've said this countless times up here and I'll say it again. The problem with these RENA numbers being hoisted upon us is the fact that during the last cycle, we did more than our fair share and none of our neighboring cities did. Pasadena, I think, made some headway, got to about 90 or 92%. But, you know, we all did our homework. We turned it in on time and now we're being punished with the rest of the class who didn't do their homework. And, and that's just fundamentally, there's an unfairness there that we have to provide. And, and more housing than any of our neighbors, and I get it that there's a bunch of experts and bureaucrats and people with more educational training in this specific area of urban planning than I or any of my colleagues do, making these decisions for us. But ultimately, I think Councilmember Najarian and others have pointed out that we are the ones that A, are seeing the impacts of it on the ground and are hearing it from our, our residents who are the ultimate stakeholders, not the theoretical stakeholders, but the actual stakeholders of the city who are also the actual voters and who vote us into office to make decisions on their behalf. So I'm fine with going along with this report and getting the information to the public, but let's be honest with the public as well as to what this could potentially mean. I don't want anyone of us to, to act, you know, in denial, not knowing what it is that we've led our city down a path of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just have a question, Madam President.
Councilmember Agujianian?
That gathering of November 15th, that will be only in English?
We are, we are conducting the meeting in English. We'll have it, we have translated. It'll be translated on the website.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have a caller for this item.
All right, thank you. So does that answer your question, Mr. Agujianian?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Okay, let's hear it from the caller then.
Vahes Sarajian, you're live, Vahes, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Honorable Mayor and councilpersons. My name is Vahes Sarajian and my call is in regards to racism and city of Glendale. And Glendale is the fourth largest city in County of Los Angeles.
Vahes, this isn't, this isn't item you should be talking on, it says 10A here. This is regarding draft housing element. If you like to.
Well, the population here, yes. You, you're saying I should call later?
You should call under oral communications if you're talking about racism, unless it has to do with the report we just discussed.
Well, it's housing, I mean, the only 1.8% of people here are blacks. Okay, so I'll call later.
No, hold, hold on to the line. Once we get to oral communications, then you have five minutes to talk, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Sure, hold on.
Okay, thank you. Then if we have no other, yes.
Oh, I do have a, a couple of questions or clarifications. One of them is, so I guess we've been able to identify sites to meet our RENA number without any, without any upzoning, is that right? We're not making any changes to our zoning, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. The other thing I was going to ask is, are we making any assumptions now based on SB9 for lot splits or duplexes?
At this time, we have not included those in consideration in terms of the inventory. And the reason is that we must have substantial evidence as to the assumptions that we make in the assessment of potential units. And at this time, no one, including Glendale, has the ability to exactly determine with substantial evidence the assessment of impact of issues related to SB9 and 10. So at this time, we don't feel that we would be able to justify any potential capacity there, but it's quite possible that it may help to contribute to the city's housing stock, although it may not be shown on the map or shown as a strategy.
Okay. And, and the last one is, you mentioned earlier workforce housing. We get a credit for, for the conversions to workforce housing. So as you know, we have these new projects now, existing buildings that we, those numbers, when, when those were built, I'm assuming those came into our fifth cycle housing element because I think they're all, they were probably all during the fifth cycle.
That's a wonderful question. So we.
Yeah, I'm wondering how those, how that works. Did we take it out of one bucket and shift it to another or what?
Sure. So when the unit was, when a unit is produced, such as these units that were online, produced during the fifth cycle between 2014 and 2021, they were shown as production of new units and progress towards meeting your fifth cycle RENA. Brand-new units coming online contributing to an increase in the city's housing stock. For units that were market rate and now converted to affordable through deed restrictions to moderate or lower-income households, you get to kind of double count those. You can count a percentage of those towards meeting a portion of your sixth cycle RENA. So although the units were not newly constructed and when they were newly constructed, they were counted towards that cycle. Although they weren't newly constructed, statute does allow for a portion of converted units to be a credit towards the city's RENA. So you can take extra credit for the conversion of market rate to affordable units. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and is there a specific ratio? Do we get, you know?
Yes, you can.
Unit converted, we get to count half a unit or something? How does it work?
You can count a one-for-one unit replacement up to 25% of your moderate-income RENA distribution. So one for, a one-for-one replacement up to 25% of your moderate RENA.
I see. Okay, that's very interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, thank you. With that, I'll, I'll thank you Amanda for the presentation and my colleagues for their thoughtful discussion. And I hope that staff will take our, our suggestions into action and have as many outreach meetings as you can in languages that, besides English, so that we reach as many of the community members as we can, especially hitting homeowners associations and et cetera. Thank you very much. What's next, please?
Next would be oral, oral communications. Discussion is limited to not a part of this agenda. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Madam Mayor, I do have three callers for oral communication.
Okay, let's hear them, please.
Vahes Sarajian, go ahead. You have five minutes, Vahes.
Honorable Mayor and councilpeople, councilpersons, my name is Vahes Sarajian and I'm going to be talking about the issue of racism in city of Glendale. Glendale is the fourth largest city in the Los Angeles County, yet the black population of Glendale is only 1.8%. How is that possible? It is because racism and this former sundown town is alive. It is thriving thanks to the city's leadership. Let me tell you how you, the city council, has contributed to keeping Glendale white. I am the owner of a home located at Harrington Drive. I made my home available for short-term rental. From the beginning, a large number of my guests were black Americans. At the time, I did not know that the city of Glendale was a former sundown town where black Americans were not welcome and were systematically excluded. One of the first hate incidents I witnessed was in 2017 when four neighbors approached me in front of my house and they told me to stop renting the house to these kinds of people, that I had brought, I had brought South Central to the neighborhood. And one of the neighbors even launched at me with his fist and elbow cocked back as if he was going to fight me. Following this incident, at least 43 calls were made to Glendale Police Department by certain people in my neighborhood. I made a public record request for, for emails sent to the police department from my neighbors. The emails were rampant with racism, using words to describe my black guest as gangster, stating, I quote, "I felt like I was living in a gangster neighborhood," another quote. Frankly, had I gone out earlier, I would be scared to come home," another quote. This is a very scary situation and not something I should have to put up with in the city of Glendale. You, the councilpeople, sounded sided with the people who told me I'd brought South Central to the neighborhood when you voted to ban short-term rentals. You sided with the people who assaulted me for hosting black guests. What's truly terrifying is that I'm not the only homeowner that experienced racially motivated police calls for my black guest. Next council meeting, I will discuss the racially motivated police service requested, request made at the Montecito House in Glendale. On August 25, 2018, a black family was surrounded with, by four police vehicles for three hours due to an email from a neighbor complaining about vulgar rap music. The neighbor sent this email to the city manager, Yasmin Beers, and asked to put the matter on the city council agenda. Interestingly enough, there's an email from an officer on the scene who confirms the people were doing nothing wrong. They may not have been doing anything wrong, but they were black in Glendale. That is my statement, Madam.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Bert Culver? Bert, you have five minutes. Go ahead, Bert.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I was taken aback by the condescending tone at the end of last week's council meeting. If it wasn't for Glendale citizens standing up to GWP, we'd be building a 250-megawatt gas plant right now for 700 or more millions of dollars. In response, after fighting it every inch of the way, GWP did a good job of finding some substitutes, but they can do more. It is clear that they have to be pushed very hard to do better. Citizens are calling into the council to push and to remind you that citizens of Glendale feel very passionate about this issue. Imagine how popular the proposed 250-megawatt methane plant would be today if you had approved it in 2019. Heck, one council member already lost his position because of his support for it. The public has been told to be patient ever since global warming was identified in the 1970s. It's been utilities like GWP that have slowly, slow rolled any change for decades and we are now out of time. I'm sorry if that is inconvenient and makes it seem like we are not being patient, but we have to realize that every ton of CO2 emitted now locks in climate change for up to 1,000 years. This year was one of the hottest in human history and yet it will probably be the coolest year my daughter will ever experience. If you think the recent drought was bad, just wait. It's going to be a lot worse. GWP should have replaced Grayson back when we thought we had time to transition, but they didn't. Now it's too late. They need to stop mucking about with new gas infrastructure and acquire even more renewables. They claim that transmission is too expensive, but they don't have anything like studies or RFPs to back up that claim. LADWP has committed to going 100% clean by 2035. Their anticipated growth in demand before then is more than our entire peak load and yet they are committed to transitioning away from fossil fuels. If LADWP can do it on such a huge scale, why can't we? Instead of building a new gas power plant, as an example, we could put solar and batteries on the half the homes in Glendale. We could do creative financing where low-income people get it upfront for free and then pay it back $50 a month on their bills that are reduced more than $50, or they could simply pay it back when they sell their house. This would lower our peak demand substantially and give us local generation capacity. We wouldn't need gas at Grayson, but we would need a larger battery storage facility. This could be done with lithium batteries or one of the several battery chemistry alternatives that are cheaper and less prone to fire. In conclusion, just like GWP was blowing hot air in 2018, they're blowing hot air now. They could have procured renewable energy in 2018, but they didn't. They said it was impossible. They said there were deadlines. They said we were dreaming. And then, thanks in part to a few of the current members of city council, they had to go back to the drawing table. Well, just like in 2018, they're now saying they can't go 100% clean. Trust me, they could do it, but they're choosing not to. Please don't fall for their baloney this time around either. Ask them to do an RFP for solutions to the power island problem and make sure they get bids from advisors. and make sure they get bids from advisors whose history wasn't built upon fossil fuel development, like Spantec or Pace Energy. Imagine how popular a new 93-megawatt methane plant will be in two years when GWP plans to start building it. Glendale can go 100% renewable. They just have to be told to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Next caller?
Ron Crossways? Ron? You have five minutes, go ahead.
Hello, yes, Chair. Um, I, I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I've attended city council meetings in person before and I appreciate seeing local government at work. I, I pretty much want to echo the previous caller. Uh, we've seen so much damage from climate change in California and the rest of the world recently. Um, and, and we know that fossil fuels contribute to that. Um, I, I feel this is, uh, urgent, that we do something towards, uh, uh, climate change. Um, to make a long-term investment at, uh, Grayson and fossil fuels, uh, doesn't seem like the like, right way to go. Uh, I, I like the idea of, of looking forward to 100% eventually, 100% clean energy. Uh, now, this, this might not be possible today. Um, but I like the idea of, uh, uh, transitioning to all clean energy going forward eventually. Uh, in any case, I want to thank the council for all your hard work in listening and making these decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Crossway. Any other callers?
Yes, I do have one more. Cole Bazemore? Cole, you have five minutes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. My name is Cole Bazemore and I'm a resident of the Citrus Grove Neighborhood in Glendale. Um, I'm calling in today to echo the same words of the previous callers and urge the council to make the smart decision to invest in local renewable clean energy projects when considering alternatives for the Grayson repowering project. Now is not the time to invest in more fossil fuel infrastructure. Carbon dioxide from burning fossil fuels is piling up in the atmosphere and a new record of 419 hearts per million was set in May of this year. This is an existential problem, but one that can be addressed by investing in clean energy today. I support the council's request that Glinbo Water and Power consider clean energy alternative for the repowering project. But I would also like to ask the council to take bold action and join with our neighbors in the City of Los Angeles in committing to 100% clean energy by 2035. As our national leaders in Washington struggle to pass key climate initiatives and our world leaders at the 26th United Nations Climate Change Conference that unambitious pledges, you, our City Council, have the opportunity to lead the way towards securing our clean energy future. The time for action is now. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my comments. And thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and staff for your time and work securing a clean energy future.
Thank you, Cole. Any more callers?
Madam Mayor, we have no more callers.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you to all the callers. Um, what's next, please?
Adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Adjournment, all right.
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned at 7:33. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.